Bill, it's tech to tech.
Hey, Bill.
Yeah.
I'm on the meeting. This is Damon.
I hear you. Can you hear me, Damon?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
All right, first item on the agenda. Yeah, minutes from the last meeting. What the hell do I do with my agenda?
Second.
James Quirk, aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon?
Damon, aye.
Bill Lambresino, aye. Um, did you take my agenda?
I have this one that Gail sent me mine, but you can use it.
I don't know what I did with it. Hold on one second. Okay. I don't know if it's over there or not. Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. We got it.
Well, I'm just making sure I put everything in order for you. Like I didn't last time.
Okay. Did you have the, uh, oh, don't tell me you didn't have it. No, I'm talking about, do you have a copy of the revisions made to the bylaw? I thought you got a copy of those revisions. The bylaw changes. That town council made. Yeah. I have a copy on mine. Let me just check. Jack, you're on?
Yep.
All right, unfortunately, we don't have a copy of the, uh... Your office. No, I'd have him send you a copy now.
I can do that.
Um... No, it's Jack.
Is he sending it to me now?
Can you send it to Gail right now, Jack?
I'm gonna send it to both of you. I, at the, I don't know who told me, but I sent them to a Laura... I think it's Kim's secretary.
St. Ange?
Yes. That's who asked me, uh, to send it to.
Hey, um, what's your email address? He's gonna be, he's gonna give you an email address to send it to. And send it to his. He can print right over there.
Perfect.
So we'll have him. Give us one second.
You can table this while we work this out.
I'm gonna push it off. We'll move on to the next agenda item while you do that.
Yep, yep.
All right. We have a letter here. I think you all have a copy. From, uh, Mr. Lapham. Um, this is a, uh, subdivision we approved, uh, several years ago for, um, Riley Woods. For Wayne Kimball. They're just looking for an extension because the time has run out. Um... I don't, uh, I don't have issue with it.
I'll make a motion on that, Bill.
Okay.
How long do they want to extend it for?
Until March 10th, 2023.
I make a motion to extend the Riley Woods subdivision off of Robinson Road until 2023.
James Quirk, second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
Lambresino, aye. Fred is, um... Actually, I asked that question before the vote, just to make sure that the stone water management is up to, uh...
Well, it'll, it'll be, you're planning on bonding.
Okay. Okay, good enough.
That's not gonna become a public, public access, public roadway anyway, right?
It's gonna be private? Okay.
Yeah, so you don't have to fall into that.
Nope, nope. That brings that to, uh...
You're very welcome.
So you still have time to go to the stakehouse?
Never forget the Jimmy Fund.
All right. 81P. Fred?
Yes.
You're gonna have to bring that a lot closer to us.
Do you want me to?
Oh, we, you know what? We got a sheet here.
You got the smaller one.
All right. Does everybody know where this is? This is the, uh... Roads had many different names. At one time, it was Oxbridge Road Extension. It was Old Town Way. It was Hill Street. I always knew it as Hill Street. But I guess apparently the town has decided that all the addresses on there are Oxbridge Road, so, um... You know, that's an issue for the select board. That's not an issue for us naming the street. Uh, we'll refer to it, uh, I guess at this point, um, as, uh, Old Town Way, AKA Hill Street. How's that? Anyone, any objections by the board?
Uh, with me.
Any objections by the community? See out there that has any questions, uh? Hey, that's okay. All right, so basically, how much of land do we have here? Plenty, right?
We have, uh, 4.1 acres.
About plan?
Yes. And we have 236 feet of frontage on the portion of the street that is built, that is in use and, uh, is paved. The surface is a combination of pavement and recycled asphalt. And we have 30, uh, 236 feet of frontage on that section of roadway.
Okay.
The road actually goes through all the way over the...
Yeah, yeah.
Originally, it did, but, uh, it's only been maintained where the houses are.
Yeah.
The town does maintain this, uh, roadway.
All right. Do you know?
Uh, we would, uh, I, I know there's an interest in having a turnaround at the, at the end. And what I would, uh, propose is a 40-foot, uh, hammerhead.
Yeah.
Into our property, not the neighbor's property.
Okay.
40 feet should be plenty to be able to turn any vehicle around. They all get up there and turn around now anyway, but it's probably a, you know, 10-point turn.
Yeah, we certainly don't want emergency equipment having to do a 10-point turn, so...
What I would, uh, what I would do is I would come in maybe at the next meeting with, uh, a, an easement plan just for that purpose. But that has to be, we have a, we have a culvert here, and there's a, a stream that flows through the culvert. And we want to keep it away from that, and we want to get a level spot. It's not gonna be...
Do you want to hold this plan? You want us to, to vote on it tonight?
Pardon me?
You wanted us to hold this, or do you want to...
No, I would, I would make that an easement plan separate from this one.
Okay.
Okay, so what is the E... This is one lot?
Yeah, it's all one lot, Damon.
And they're gonna do a... And you're only gonna leave it as one lot? What are you doing? You gotta make a hammerhead?
Yeah, just emergency equipment turnaround.
But it's a single driveway, correct?
Yes, it'll be one.
How long is the driveway?
Pardon me?
How long is the driveway?
Well, it's gonna, the, the usable land is gonna be out back. You can see on the, on the easterly side or the right-hand side, if you look at it, on the plan. That is the, represents the largest, best-looking property on, on the lot. So out there, um, we haven't picked, uh, the location for the house, so we don't know what the exact driveway length is.
I mean, I guess it really doesn't matter on our end anyway.
No, as long as a 40-foot of hammerheads, yeah. I mean, we don't need, I would presume it'd be part of the driveway.
Oh, yeah.
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 Yes.
We'd have our entrance 40 feet down the road.
And how wide are you gonna make it?
Uh, well, that section should be about 18 feet wide, 40 feet long.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions, or... It's all the criteria for a lot.
I make a motion to approve the 81P. Was it 91?
Uh, it's on Oxbridge Road right now, I guess.
It's 91 Oxbridge Road.
Yeah, we'll let the, we'll let the selectmen resolve that for you, but, um, if there is another plan that needs to be signed at some point because the name changes, you know, just come before us and we'll...
Sure.
James Quirk, second.
Go ahead.
In favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
Lambresino, aye. All right. Yeah, really. But I'm sure there's, we'll find something.
No, I have no interest in hanging around. This, this chairman looks like he's ready to go.
This isn't the marked up one, though, huh?
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
I can send you the marked up one. I didn't know you wanted that.
Um, you know what? Um, if you want to walk us through the changes...
Yeah, I can do that. When you're ready.
Yeah, why don't you just walk us through the changes?
Okay, so essentially, um, there were some grammatic errors in there and some redundancies that I got rid of. And I made, and, and in the end of the day, I made all the changes town council wanted. Um, and then I added one that I believe the chairman wanted, and I'll go through the, the ones of consequence, I guess. And there's not that many after you get rid of the redundancies.
Sure.
You go to section, under definitions, the allowed uses by right within the A and, AR, A rod. You got that?
Yep.
Um, I added number four, there shall be no more than two bedrooms per unit, and I believe the chair wanted that at the last meeting.
Yes.
Um, then, um, you know, there were a couple typos under the concept plan. I changed that. She also wanted a definitive number of copies that stated in the bylaw. And Gail and I kind of missed emails, and I put down eight because that's what you require in one of your other bylaws.
That's fine.
You know, I didn't know exactly how to handle it.
No, that's fine. Eight will be, eight is sufficient, and on a larger plan like this, we like to have more available to us.
I had, if, if you go to, uh, under the concept plan, requirements, under number eight, it now says the planning board may waive any requirements in order to achieve the purpose and intent of this bylaw. And I had other language in there about site plan review, and she felt it was too redundant and too subjective, so I deleted it.
No, that's good. Um, I actually discussed that with her.
Yep.
She felt if, uh... Oh, she felt that it, uh, created ambiguity the, the way we, uh, had it worded before. She wanted to make it clear in the bylaw.
Yeah, and you know, she's trying to protect you and not open it up for, uh, a lawsuit or whatever.
Yep.
That's her job. Thank God. Um, then, oh, here's a good one. If you go to parking, under F, parking. I'll read, it's FA, so it's parking, and it used to say, "A minimum of 1.5 spaces per residential unit shall be provided in addition to visitor parking. These amounts shall be determined by the planning board." She felt that was way too wishy-washy. So I added, after I looked at what the state and mostly every community I could find requires, I just put 1.5 spaces and a minimum of one space of visitor parking per three residential units. That's what everyone else is requiring. At the end of the day, you can always, um, you know, ask for more or less or whatever. So it's just spelled out differently.
All right. No, that's good. I like the way that's worked.
Let's see. Oh, she was, she was right about this, and I, I've been criticizing this in the past, so I, I can't, it's my own fault. But throughout the, uh, the, um, bylaw, I have bylaws in capital, capitalized. I had it with lowercase. And she just said, "Please be consistent," so I searched through the whole thing, and it's now, they're all capitalized by law.
Well, yeah, because they, let me tell you what, that'll burn an hour on town floor.
Okay.
Countation and capitalization will burn an hour.
Um, let's see. Um, the next is under five, planning board waivers. Um, we had some language in there about, um, let me read it. Right now, it says, "Planning board may grant waivers from designer dimensional requirements of the A rod." We had it, so it didn't even say of the A rod, so she was concerned that you'd be granting waivers, uh, things that weren't within this bylaw.
Right.
So we, I trimmed that right out. Um, and, hold on. And that's it.
Okay. It's a pretty effective bylaw.
I think so. I, I really think, um, it gives, it gives the planning board a lot of tools, I'll tell you that.
Yeah. Well, we're gonna have to make, uh, you know, we're just gonna have to make good decisions if we want to work with the developer to develop their property, but...
That's right.
We'll see. Um... Is there any, uh, questions from the board?
Nope.
Any questions from the community? Okay. Well, I would need a motion on the floor.
The changes? That's how it should be stated?
As amended.
Oh, as amended, okay. So who's?
I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to accept bylaw 5.05, men and age restricted, overlay district, as written.
James Quirk, second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
Bill Lambresino, aye. All right, um... I'll, we'll have to get a, uh... Uh, I'll have to do a letter to the, the town floor. Um, recommending the, uh, the bylaw, so I'll get that done and get a motion written. Jack, you want to write the motion, or you want me to?
I, I'll be glad to. I, I don't, I'll ask Kim her standard motion. I do have a couple questions. I'm gonna be at town meeting. Um, the last I talked to Kim, which is granted maybe a month ago, she wasn't sure whether it was a great idea if I presented this or not. I don't care. I mean, but I'll be there for backup at minimum.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll, I'll present it, Jack, and then, uh, if, if questions come about the, you know, they need answering, I'll, uh, I'll refer to you.
Perfect. And do you want handouts?
Um, and I guess it wouldn't hurt.
I'll make a handout of the bylaw, the map, and I'll, I'll write a memo in the front of it explaining what we're trying to do.
Okay.
And then, um, how many copies should I make, Gail?
We're just gonna add, yeah, everything posted online as well. So if you can send stuff to me, I'll get it up on the warrant, so people can maybe pull up on their phones and stuff.
Can you, uh, send him the, um...
Dan? Yep, I will send you what I put together. Give me till the end of the week, but, uh, we got a, we got a little bit of time.
Yeah, we got time.
When you need it by, Dan. Okay.
Yeah, so if you need it any time in the next week or so, that's fine. It'll be plenty of time.
Yep. Well, thank you. It's been a pleasure. Hopefully, I'll be seeing you soon.
Hopefully. We'll see you later.
Mr. Chairman will make a motion to close the public hearing for zoning bylaw 5.05 overlay district.
James Quirk, second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
Bill Lambresino, aye. All right, so dead it matters, put to rest. Move on to the next gender item. Uh, which is approval of the design guidelines.
Okay, instead, do you want to do the 81P for 27 Park Street first?
Yes. Well, it's not dock yet. He's somewhere he's gonna be after dock. You want to do it now, or you want to do, you want to wait? Yeah.
Okay.
We should get rid of a couple of these things. This other thing with John Denard, if he's just submitting plans, then he doesn't have to sit there through all this if he doesn't, if he's got something to do also.
Yeah, why don't you? We'll do both. We'll do both.
Okay, great. Okay.
Why is he adding 181P stuff here?
No, that's not me.
No, that's John Paul.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry. Oh, John Palumbo, okay.
Wait a minute, no.
I got Fred's over here.
Oh, that's Fred Lapham's in behind you. This is...
It's John Palumbo's? Okay.
Do you want, am I, do you want me to present tonight, or just admit?
Usually, usually we have a brief overview in case we have, the, the board has to look something up. We don't take any questions or anything for the middle.
I'll do that right now.
Is this online, too?
Yeah, I gave, I gave it to Matt, um, to Ellen, and she was putting it on. Ellen put it on.
All right, this is middle for, uh, uh, preliminary subdivision plan, um, for Emmis Court, 29 Half and Avenue West. It's an open space subdivision. Uh, it looks like you've got everything here. Eight copies, two for the board of health.
Did you bring me some checks too, John?
Yeah, it's, um, attached to the forms I gave you.
It's got the Form B, Form D, M1. About as list. Cleanliness, will lean certificate, and a filing check.
Gail, do you have a check, Gail, with all that paperwork?
It was attached to the form.
In my packet.
It was in the front of the box when we started.
And I, I thought I put one on the side, because I don't have it here.
Yeah. No, no, it should have, it was, it's another packet like this with the checks. Did anyone see the form?
I didn't, I don't have it, no.
Oh, wait a minute, what's this?
Yeah, that's it, right there.
Oh, there you go.
He's always trying to keep the checks.
That's it. Wait a minute, it's not made out to me.
Does it say Jimmy Fund?
Wait, it's not made out to me.
Do you want extra copies of this?
All right, let me just go through the forms and make sure you did them right.
Because I'm good, I just mail both.
All right, doesn't require special permit because it has it right. Um, did you, are you going to, uh, get this, uh, over to Jeff, to the final?
You guys usually send it to him, but I can if you want. I didn't know.
I mean, if you want to, then you would have to take that.
It's up to you. I can mail it to him, or you can mail it to him.
Well, he'd rather if you take it to him, deliver it to him.
Oh, okay, I can do that.
Okay.
I'll take it tomorrow, John.
I'll let him know then tomorrow, okay?
So I'm gonna take one of these?
Yep.
And one of the eight? That'd be fun to sell.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay. I will hand deliver it tomorrow, Peter.
Okay. Thank you. So much.
John, have you sent this to the fire department?
I have not. Um, you saw the preliminary. Um, I think he gets one of those eight cop, seven copies that are in that, I think.
Yeah, he does.
Yeah, he does, yeah.
Just because it's so small here, I can't see. Where is your system?
Um, so this is preliminary. We don't have a system on there. That'll all be shown on the definitive sheets. This is basically the lot layout to show that the lots work on the, um, seven lot subdivision, and then go to the open space.
Paperwork looks in order.
This has some drainage that is shown. Also, I had spoken with Anne Mazar after the last meeting, and she had a couple changes. Those changes are done on the definitives that we're working on already, but they're not done on the preliminary plans. These are basically the same plans that I came.
Did you, um, did you incorporate LID?
Yes, so, so, well, let me just go through three of them. So what we have is 36, it's a seven-lot subdivision. We have 36 acres. Um, we have two sets of plans. We have a conventional subdivision, which is shown on this, which would be a road that's 20,050 feet in length, or an open space subdivision, which is a proper, which is approximately 1,100 feet. Um... This provides permanent open space, approximately, uh, uh, 20, um, excuse me, 22.23 acres of open space of the total 36 acres. That's 50.8% of the total property. Um, it also provides, um, upland of 65% of that, um, of that total amount. Uh, what this does is reduces the lot size, reduces the roadway, reduces the impervious area, which lets us do, um, soft drainage, which is, could be referred to as country drainage, soft drainage. Um, this whole subdivision is designed like that. Water quality swales on the edges of the road, they go to bio-retention areas, detention areas, and rain gardens. Um, those areas are shown in the blue. The drainage wells are shown along the edge of the road, coming this direction on this way, and this direction on the other. There's another, another one of these right here on the other side of the road. And we use those swales, we're using best management practices there at the M book for the low impact drainage on the whole site. Lot size and clearing is reduced immensely. You can see on this overall plan that's colored, this red line. Red line is the total property. And you can see the amount of gray and green areas. That's all we took, we had on the whole site compared to if you did a full lot. When we did the full subdivision, all of this area, this whole area has been...
Let's try and keep as much...
Many trees as possible, we will. I'm going to try to keep within these green areas. We'll show tree line on the definitive plans also.
Okay.
We've already started those. Like I said, we're hoping to get those into you in four weeks, so...
Can I ask one question? Why don't you go straight to, because we discussed this before. Why don't you go straight to the definitive?
Um, so I was just following the bylaws of pre-submission. And then for open space, it's almost, in the bylaws, it says you almost have to do preliminary submission.
Yeah, okay.
So it's pre-submission, preliminary submission, and then the definitive sheets.
Right.
Because what it does is the preliminary plan lets you see that we can get eight lots on the conventional subdivision.
Well, yeah, and you had done it at last meeting, so it's kind of...
Yeah, well, that was a pre-submittal. I didn't formally submit. They say to do a pre-submittal and preliminary. So I was just trying to follow the bylaws as best, as best as I could.
Where is the access to the open space?
So the access to the open space is between...
Too many lines.
Lots seven and eight, right here at the end of the cul-de-sac. On the definitive, I've added a widening this front area so the parking for the open space will be right here in the front.
Yeah.
This access comes all the way down. It's 25 feet wide to the open space. This is all open space here. This is mostly wet, but then the back piece is backed right here, so that entrance way comes up here, and then this is wide open. On the definitive, I moved these over, these two lines to give more space there. The end is requested that, we've already done that. And then this has access, there's a cop path. They'll have access like this to the cop path, and the cop path currently crosses the wetlands right here. And this is all upland up in here. It's very nice. There's also another 10 acres on the other side of the utility investment that we bought with this. It's mostly wet, but we would include that also. So we actually make 33 acres of open space. Bring it to the town, mannequin, whoever takes it. They have access, the parking will be included in the open space, not as the unit or anything. And that would be used for the town private and local use. One of the bylaws.
And you're going to make sure that all the signage and everything is done?
Yeah, so...
Especially along that last lot where you're running the...
Yeah, so we can put, we'll put signage along all of our property lines, and I would say probably along the back property line. Or, you know, this has gone through the middle of the west. I would say probably on the high...
Yeah, I wouldn't put it in the white lands, obviously.
You know, anywhere it's high, we can put signs at 100 feet, 50 feet, whatever you guys want. That's not a problem.
Yeah, I just, I was concerned about that one lot that it's adjacent to, the axis is adjacent to. I want to make sure people aren't wandering onto that lot.
Yep. Yep, so, you know, the set of plans contains two existing conditions plans, which is part of the bylaw.
Yeah.
It contains the conventional subdivision plans.
Yeah.
It contains the open space subdivision plans with lot tables and open space tables for both the conventional and the open space. I believe those are shown on, the tables are on 105 and 109, C 105 and C 109. And then we also, we also have done profiles of the road with grading. I did, I brought this in just to show the board the difference. If we do a conventional subdivision with no waivers that we can get doing the open space, you can see the large fill here, the large cut here, the large fill here. When that gets changed to an open space that we're allowed to get waivers from the board.
Yeah.
The fill is less on the wetland crossing, which lets, fill less wetlands. There's almost no cut. There's very little fill coming back down the hill, and then we can almost meet grade through the whole thing. So we're following an existing cop path that's there now with the road. The only place we didn't is right at the beginning because it originally took a sharp corner like this and then hooked around. So we kind of had to straighten that a little to make the curves meet the town greens. But other than that, we came right down the cop path in the back that's been there for years. And we ended the cul-de-sac right at the cop path, and that cop path continues until lot eight. And that's about it. So this is just the submittal. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. You have to schedule a public hearing for this, right?
Yeah.
And then I'll submit again, and I'll go through everything again at the public hearing. Our engineer Tetra Tac will be here at the public hearing. And I knew it was just a submittal, so I didn't have him come. We'll be using Greenwald and Greenwald as our lawyer to draft the HOA. This is going to be a private street.
Yeah.
So we'll have a homeowners association for any repairs to the street, plowing, et cetera. And then any lots, so this is kind of, I'm showing duplex lots, but I'm not sure that's what it's going to be. Some of them may be single families, some of them may be duplexes. If we, if there is a duplex lot that we build on, there'll have to be a condo association for that individual lot. There'll be a shared septic system, so there'll be condo fees for upkeep of the septic system while employing of the driveway.
And the duplexes...
Yes.
Have... Do we outline in the open space what the dimension, any dimensional requirements?
No, you didn't. So what I did is, they're all very much oversized compared to
Okay.
the reductions that single family gets. I have them listed here. They're on that C 109, I believe, if you want me to read them. They're all, like, the areas are 65,000, 93, 63, 47, 63, 80, and 110. Single family is 20,000 in an open space.
Right.
So we have more than two, the least one is two and a half times what a single family would be.
Okay.
John, yes, lot three and lot five, is that a shared driveway or is that...
So, we are, he is showing a shared driveway on this, and he did that because there's some wetlands on that lot. And we weren't sure if we were going to try to get closer to the wetlands. So we did show a shared driveway, and that is part of the bylaw that you can share a driveway for two lots.
Right.
I would prefer that we come right on the side of the lot line here and separate them, but I didn't see that though, it was getting close to me.
Enough to give two driveways there?
Yeah, I believe we can. I think we can come around this side.
I think he's got, yeah, I think he feels he's got enough room to make a separate driveway.
If we come around the side of the lot line and just bring this one straight out, and not have to come in front of this other one.
Yeah.
If this comes straight out, then I will change that. That was one of the things that I saw close to the meeting today.
And on lot one, is that new construction or is that existing?
Lot one, we did an A and O plan, and that's existing. We already cut it out of the subdivision. That's why it's a seven lot, not eight lot. It will be part of the HOA though, for upkeep of the building.
Yep. Okay. Now, there's, you're going to leave the other outbuildings on that lot?
Correct, yes. There's a family house and two bonds currently there. They've already been restored and ready. That's for sale now.
Okay.
Hey, John? Yes?
I don't know what your plans are. We had, we had some issues. And I hope that, the way that I feel that we should do is that we can finally accept the road, that's when they accept the open space, not no time before that.
Well, I think there's a new, part of the new, I was reading it in the bylaw and it says that it has to be turned over to whichever, whoever's going to own it prior to any lots being leased.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, there we go again with that, that, you know what? Somebody's pulled a fast one.
So that's in the zoning changes, I believe, in your bylaw that are in tonight online? I don't know.
I won't be voting on that.
It's... Well, Ann, see, I don't know if Ann knows about it. Yeah.
All I know is when you, we've got a perfect example of why we should be taking the stuff at the end. So we don't have a problem like we're having on Pond Street. And if there is something that happens down the road, you can fix it at the end before you accept the road. And then the town's not liable if something happens on that property while construction is going on. I thought Ann was clear on that, but obviously not. I guess she wants to do it differently.
What, we talked about this at the... And how it changes is that it's a planning board discretion. So, it's a board discretion.
It's the board's discretion.
So I was reading it, I was reading it on the town site today, and it was redlined in the zoning changes, and it specifically, to me, I read it and specifically said that that has to be turned over. And the ownership has to be changed prior to any lots being leased. That's what I read.
I think there's language in there about planning board discretion on the bylaw itself. Yeah.
I was just reading the line part, so I read the red line, and that's what I read. So that's why I said...
I think that was there before, so...
Okay, all right.
It used to be at the developer's discretion, and so it made more sense to have it be at the planning board's discretion.
Understood. Yeah, so I'll, we'll do that anytime you want. It doesn't matter to us. I don't foresee us needing going into any of the open spaces. Mostly open spaces that abut to wetlands. It's not like the upland abuts the lots, the upland's way in the back, and it's surrounded by wetlands.
No, it's just, we've got to prevent situations like that happen on Pond.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with what happens, so...
Well, you know, unfortunately, it's a situation that got a little out of hand, now needs to be fixed, so someone's bringing...
It's not a big deal to do it that way. It's just that the fact that, then we have a little bit of... Right, at the end, when we go, when they want the road accepted and everything's done, if there's any issues, we can correct them. Any lot line issues by accident, nobody's perfect.
Until they resolve.
So in this case, it's a private road, so this one wouldn't get accepted.
For this one, we might have to hold you to it, so...
Which is fine, doesn't matter.
We'll talk about it, yeah, we'll talk about it in the public hearing.
These lots almost all abut to the wetlands. And the open stuff, the major portion of the upland and nice land is on the other side of another wetland with a cop path that goes back to it. So I don't foresee any problems with that on this one.
All right. Well... This is any further questions? I need a motion to set a public hearing for the... Yeah.
Make a motion to set a public hearing. 29 Hartford Ave West.
Preliminary subdivision.
Preliminary subdivision plan for May 24, 7 p.m.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Barry, aye.
I'm going to abstain from this.
Okay.
You're abstaining, Damon?
Yes.
Abstaining.
Okay.
Bill Lambrosino, aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Put these in the box.
I just need that Form B in that packet. Yeah, I need it for the town clerk. Just the Form B. You know what, I'll make the parking to put it there.
No. Damon, you right there?
Yep, just, okay, thank you.
Yes, I am.
Just when you're abstaining, could you let me know ahead of time before the meeting? Just in case it's a special permit that I make sure we have enough to vote on the special permits? Because we could have a...
I knew that it wasn't a hearing bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew that it wasn't going to be a hearing or anything, so... But when we go further on this, I will abstain, and I will let you know.
So I'll have to make sure we, we'll make sure we have to have all the other four members here for all those meetings.
This whole piece I will probably abstain on due to...
Yeah, I understand.
Ethics. All right, thank you.
All right. Now we got the 81P. We have an 81P submittal for 27 Park Street and... It's like 27 and two lots on 27 Park Street. All right.
I'm not sure, is Alexis on?
Yep, I'm on.
Okay, is your grandfather on too?
He is not, he was not available.
Alexis is the granddaughter.
All right, I just want to advise the board and the community that I have a notice of decision from the zoning board of appeals for 27 Park Street. Dated December 10, 2020. That was when the decision was written. Request of the variance, seeking relief from Article 2, Section 2.01, which requires 200 feet of frontage along the public way. Their request of the variance to reduce the frontage to 51.57. 1.4 acres of property, 60,000 square foot of upland. So included with the, with the variance. I thought it said two lots.
So the...
Taken out of 27.
Right, it's being separated.
Oh, okay. It looks like the frontage has been issued all of the dimensional requirements and all tentative access is available. I mean, it sits on the current cul-de-sac, so it... So it looks like everything else is suitable. Does anybody have any questions? Anybody want to look at this?
Breaking up lot one or breaking up lot two?
Yeah, lot one, alright.
Let's see, lot two.
What's that?
What's he gonna have to punish to get into the other piece?
There, that would be a landlock on that, and he has, uh, section down on Park Street that he can access, maybe.
Say that one time, you, you broke up when you were speaking?
Yeah, sorry. Um, that section of land he would no longer have access to, he would have to access the rest of the property through, um, the opening at the end of Park Street, or at the end of his property on Park Street.
Okay.
So that piece goes to Park Street.
This piece here.
Yep.
Park Street's over here, oh, what's it, wraparound this one?
Yeah, it comes out then to here.
Okay. Alright.
Look at the locusts.
Yeah, I, I looked at it, I was trying to decipher. Street is in Montwell there, but...
No, this is the, this is...
The soccer field area, you're breaking off a white here, you have this remaining land, that's...
This is, this is, this is where John's house is here.
Oh, I see, he has Park Street right here, okay.
Shouldn't have a problem?
Yeah, no, not a problem. Alright, I don't, uh...
Make a motion to pass the eighty-one P for, uh, lot one. Let me set the block.
James Quirk, second.
Uh, all those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
Lamborghini, aye.
I need to come sign that, uh, decision? I mean, that, uh, Form A?
Yeah, you should. I have another decision we're gonna have to sign anyways.
Hey, Alexis, you're all set.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You can come in tomorrow morning, just call me before you come, okay?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'll try to get there around ten o'clock, you know, Simon.
Okay, great, thank you, Damon.
Who's the, uh, former?
Radio. Sign those two.
Go.
Yeah.
I need to sign the bylaw.
Yep, I'll be there in a sec.
This one first, though.
You have two for each, right?
Yeah.
Have the forms.
Damon, maybe? Oh, nice of that one.
For Fred?
Yeah.
I know it, we didn't sign him, so, you guys like Fred?
Yeah.
Me?
Only got the ones with, um...
Oh, that's one, is that one Fred did? That's one Fred did. He didn't get, he didn't bring a Form A?
Oh, I'm shocked. I was about to add. All in the morning. I, you're all gonna have to come in and sign it. The last appear, James.
Here's the, uh, A P R B.
Alright. Um, you know what, um, I'm going down to, uh, I have to review this deal, so we'll, we'll approve, uh, the decision at the next meeting, Aaron.
For, um, forty-seven?
Yeah, forty-seven.
Alright, you want me to take it? I need to take it then, so...
Yeah, that's good. I got, you can email this to me, I'll read it on the...
Yep, okay.
And, uh, you can send it to the entire board. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, Ann, your turn. The M O U, design?
Yeah, that was just, um, we, we did an added in the bylaw. Town council suggested putting it in the subdivision regulations, that it could be an option, that the planning board would require an M O U to be signed before, um, the first lot release. For open space subdivisions.
Hey, uh, so the memorandum of understanding. I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a reach, I think we can have the memorandum done. Um...
I think, do you have to vote on it, though, to make it, um, to put it in your subdivision regulations?
Yeah, the, unfortunately, um, I, do you have all the language that you could send to me that you, how you wanted it already, or did you send it to me already? Uh, cause that, what I gotta do is I gotta update the bylaw, that doesn't, um, you know, the planning board just votes on that and adds it, so...
Yeah, I can send you language and...
Yeah, and I'll just put in the, the, uh... Yeah, cause I'd like copies for these guys for review.
Sure.
Sure. We could do that at the April twelfth meeting, so...
Um, the other thing was the design guidelines?
Yes. Um, did you guys get a chance to look at these, or you wanna go through them real quick, or? I mean, I think they're pretty good, um...
Do, do, do you want me to just explain where they came from, or does everybody know?
You can explain, um, I, I don't think I've talked to them enough about it to know that, you know, that C M R P C and stuff is involved.
Yeah, it was originally, um, you, and it was actually brought before you, um, Bill McHenry worked with C M R P C to put the design guidelines together for affordable housing.
Yes.
And, um, you know, and they were, they're great, um, but as we looked at them, we thought like, they're really perfect for the whole town, and so the version that everybody has now is almost identical, but it, it's for the whole town, and it doesn't say like affordable housing.
Yeah.
And it, what's nice about them is, is they're optional, I mean, they're, they're guidelines, but it's a document that you can give to a developer, so they understand like, wha, what it is that you want, you know? The kind of lighting, best and friendly, um, the kind of design that, you know, fits in to the character of Mendon, um, the lighting, dark sky compliance, so that it's, you know, not really bright, um, you know, shining everywhere into the sky.
Yeah, Trish Settles and I went over this in, uh, a couple of years ago, I think.
Yeah, it's very simple, it's very visual.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, I can share it on my screen if that would be helpful, but everyone should have gotten a copy. They did.
Yeah, I know, I think it's, um... I don't, I don't take issue with it all. Like I said, I was involved from the beginning, so it's easier for me. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
It, it would also be helpful for the Route sixteen North Avenue project to have it, um, you know, Jack Hunter looked at them, and he thought they were excellent, and said it would be very helpful to be able to show, you know, developers what, what you're looking for.
Yeah, I mean, um, Dan, after we approve this, if you can, uh, post this on the planning board's site with the other, uh, bylaws, um, you know, just design handbook, it's, you know, suggestions, but the planning board will be looking to try and meet some of these goals moving forward.
Yeah, Dan Byer, um, was really helpful in making the changes in this document.
Good, good. I think, uh, I think they did a very nice job. I know they originally had done some of this for another community, is, um, another community wanted them to.
They also held a workshop and to find out what residents would like to see, and so they use that information...
Yeah.
...in the guidelines. It's just a nice tool for you guys to have.
No, it is.
If you don't give them any direction, then they don't know what you want, you know?
Yep. Well, we're trying to fix some of those along the way, and hopefully this, this will give them a better idea of what we're looking for as we go. You know, I, we keep asking for renderings, but it's kinda hard to explain to them what they want, this will kinda give them an idea of what they're, what we're looking for. So it makes our job easier, actually. Um, does anybody have any questions?
Alright, I think it's well done.
No, it is well done, very well done. Um, you know, that's why, um, I'm kinda excited to see that, um, the, uh, you know, C M R P C is gonna be doing our master plan for us, and if we can ever get enough people involved for a committee, uh, anyone out there, we're still looking for members, so, but, um, it, uh... I think they'll do a fine job on the master plan, too. I've had good success with them in the last, uh, four or five years, uh, they've been doing a great job for us, they're gonna help us rewrite our bylaws, so, you know, in the grand scope of things, a lot of this stuff is probably gonna tie in together. Um, I have a lot of confidence in them, so... On that, if you guys wanna vote to accept the design guidelines...
Make a motion to approve the design guidelines handbook.
James Quirk, second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
The Lamborghini, aye. And I think that brings that matter to, to rest.
Great, thank you.
Is there anything else?
I don't think so.
Um, no, it's, uh, I think that's a good step in the right direction. I know when Shirley and I had tried to do them ourselves for the village district we were gonna create, um, there, there were a lot more in detail as far as, you know, trim and awnings and, um, and, you know, I think we've gone a little bit too overboard. Um, so, this is a good, good fit right in the middle, I think, so... But, uh, it's good, going forward, we'll have something to work with.
Yeah, that's great. Alright, well, thank you.
You know, could you, uh, do me one favor? Take one of these booklets, have them put into a binder like the zoning, and make sure each one of the members has one.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, that way, uh, we can reference it during the hearings.
Yep.
And you keep the books with you, so you don't have to pass them all.
Okay, yep.
Alright. Other than that?
What did you say about what hearing?
Yes, Damon.
Hey, first question on the soccer field...
You don't need a hearing for this.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Go ahead, Damon.
The soccer fields over there on Cape Road?
Yeah, I'm working on that, I'm gonna need the answer on that, Damon.
Okay, as I was over, we were, we were addressing a wetlands issue on the, uh, on the, um, Gascow side the other day.
Yeah.
There was a lot of water coming down, uh, bleeding out of the bank and running down on the, in the lot line, the tree line between Gascow and the soccer field, and, and...
Well, I know...
My husband has a problem with the stormwater management and stuff like that that wasn't in place, um, when they did the drainage there.
But I talked to Jeff, and, and Jeffrey calls, um, working with, uh, the engineer, um, whether there's a change to the plan or not, I don't recall, it's been a while, so...
Okay.
Uh, he was gonna look at his notes.
I just wanna make sure, cause I mean, it's causing a lot of water problems, um, onto the, onto the abutting property, I mean, they already have water issues there, but there is water that, if there's no drainage in that parking lot, it seems odd that they, we wouldn't have asked for it with a, with a detention basin when they came in front of us the first time, so, it's hopefully, everybody's doing what the right thing, you know?
Yeah. Um, yeah, I think, um, I think there was an issue, you know, care of the lot, safety in the lot, there was a whole lot of issues going on, um, so I, I had Jeff take a look at it, and I, I know he had spoken with, uh, their engineer, so, whatever way, we'll get it resolved, I'm sure, if, uh, I'm sure N E F C won't have a problem with, you know, any, any, you know, changes we need to make, but, um, I, you know, I thought, I thought Jeff felt that, um, and I don't know whether changes were made or not, to be honest with you, but I think Jeff, uh, had, had come to a resolution with their engineer, but let me, uh...
Okay, I'm not looking to, I'm not looking to bag anybody, I just wanna make sure that, um...
Yeah, he was looking it up, and he was gonna get back to me.
Awesome, great, thank you.
Motion, John?
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Barry, aye.
The Lamborghini, aye. Goodnight, everyone.